At this time, we'll go ahead and have the citizens open forum. If there's anything any citizen would like to talk about or discuss that is not on today's agenda. Okay, we have no awards and proclamations, and we have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 6, 2009.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to zero. On to development business.
Item 7.1, application number PDD 08-3, requesting an amendment to increase the maximum allowable lot coverage from forty percent to forty-five percent on the fifteen townhome lots in the development. Sub item 7.1A, first reading ordinance number 09-10,507.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. This application refers back to what's known as the Georgetown Villa Townhome. It was done as a planned development district in the fall of 2008, and you as a body reviewed it in November of 2008. And at the time that the initial review was done, it was recognized that it was a tight fit, and at the time of the initial request, there were four exceptions that they requested from the standard requirements for townhome developments, and they were to reduce the lot depth from 100 feet to 85 feet, reduce front yard from 25 feet to 20 feet, and reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet. And then, the maximum lot coverage in that district is thirty-five percent, and we identified that most of the units in there were between thirty-five and forty percent. So, an increase in allowable lot coverage is made to forty percent. Sometime between when those plans were reviewed and the footprints and floor plans for the actual construction were developed, the townhomes grew. And, there's a sheet in your packet that looks like this. It's a summary of all the individual lots, and by our count, nine of the fifteen lots had over forty-three percent coverage. And so, as a staff, we didn't have the ability to either ignore, or waive, or modify that requirement. So, it was brought back to the Planning Commission for their recommendation, and they recommended bumping up the lot coverage to forty-five percent to accommodate that plan. And so, the action being requested to you today would be to modify that one exception that was granted and bump that from forty to forty-five percent, and that should accommodate their final plans for this townhome development. So, this comes to you with a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve that change, and the effect would be to basically amend the one section of the ordinance rezoning the property and increase that from forty to forty-five percent, and that'll allow that to fit. We did notify all the property owners in the surrounding area and did not get any feedback or response, and we think most of the impact is going to be internal and not external to other developments. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Andrew?
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Okay, if not, I'll go ahead and bring this back to the Commission.
Vice Mayor, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 09-10507, which allows an increase to forty-five percent on the fifteen townhome lots in the Georgetown Villa Development.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve ordinance number 09-10507. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to zero. On to administration.
Item 8.1, general obligation bond series 2009-A. Sub item 8.1A, receive report on bids. Sub item 8.1B, second reading ordinance number 09-10,505, authorizing the issuance and delivery of the bonds. Sub item 8.1C, resolution number 09-6644, prescribing the form and details and authorizing the bonds.
Okay, Mr. Frans.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. This is our annual round of bond sales. This set of actions finalizes the 2009A bonds, provides permanent financing for a number of different projects. We're not at this time issuing temporary notes, which we have normally done for the last couple of years. We simply don't have the projects that are mature enough to require temporary note issuance. We did receive bids on these bonds earlier today at 1:00. We did receive bids from eight securities companies. That's a very good response. It's among the best I've seen. The low bid was from PNC Capital Markets with a bid amount of total interest cost of The other bids were all higher than that. You have a complete bid list available that I distributed to you earlier. The low bid did involve today a substantial premium amount, and we then negotiated with the low bidder and basically reduced the amount of the bond issue. So, the final amount of the bond issue will now be $23,695,000 instead of the $25,600,000. That recalculation has the effect of reducing the interest cost to 3.12 percent rounded, and generates about $450,000 in less interest cost over the life of the issue than the original amount. Ordinance number 09-10,505 and resolution 09-6,644 will finalize the sale of the bonds. First reading of the ordinance occurred on June 22, 2009. These bonds provide financing for a number of projects, including, under the special assessment category, West Diamond Drive, Eagle Crest Twin Homes, Quail Meadows subdivision number four, and Red Fox subdivision, under the area of general improvements. This provides for the final phase of financing the North Ohio grade separation, provides for building or rebuilding South Ninth Street, the fourth phase of that project, financing for the energy audit project, the aquatics facility, and purchase of a ladder platform truck. All of the assessment projects have been completed, final costs determined, and assessments set. The aquatics facility contract has been let and is under construction. Contract for Phase Four of South Ninth has been let, and construction is scheduled to start momentarily. Energy project is well underway, and bids are in hand for the ladder platform truck replacement, so we're ready to spend the proceeds. As a matter of interest, the Aquatic Center bonds are authorized at $12,500,000. Bonds being sold for that purpose are going to total approximately $1 million, less than that due to favorable bids received on that project. This is a mixed maturity issue. $13.8 million will be repaid over ten years, approximately $4.8 million over a 15-year term, and just a little over $6 million for a 20-year term. As normally the case, Moody's issued a bond rating on this issue. They reaffirmed the AA3 rating that we've had for several years, and I've provided you with a copy of their opinion. It is considering the economic circumstances, I think a very sound opinion. We do have present here representatives from our fiscal advisory firm, George K. Baum, as well as legal counsel from Gilmore &amp; Bell. If I might introduce them. David Artterberry with George K. Baum, Roger Edgar with George K. Baum, and Gina Recoff is the attorney with Gilmore &amp; Bell. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you might have. I would invite any of you, ladies or gentlemen, to make any comments. You might feel appropriate.
What was the amount, one more time, reduced to?
Twenty-three million, 695,000.
And what was the reduction?
About 1.6 million. The original amount was 25 million.
What reduced it?
Oh, what reduced it? They provided a premium on the bid, which meant that they're essentially providing additional cash at the closing.
Any further questions, Mr. Frans? Thank you very much for being here today. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission.
Vice Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 09-10505, authorizing the issuance and delivery of $23,695,000 in the principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bond series 2009A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass ordinance number 09-10505 on second reading. Will the clerk please go roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Peck?
Aye. Motion passes three to zero.
Vice Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 09-6644, which prescribes the form and details of and authorizes the delivery of $23,695,000, principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bond series 2009A.
Second.
It's also been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number 09-6644. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Include myself in that, aye. Motion passes three to zero.
Item 8.2, approval of the Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program funded, fund, and grant application as submitted.
Chief Hill.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Commissioners, this is the same type of grant that I was before you on in April, the justice approval grant. The April one that you approved for submittal was actually a special grant under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. This is the regular grant. It's for quite a bit less money, $23,316. We've once again been certified as a disparate jurisdiction, and we must share the grant Whistling County since they have not the population base nor the violent crime rate to receive a direct grant. We've agreed with Whistling County that we would share $2,694 of that, leaving the city with $20,622, which is basically the same amount that each jurisdiction would receive if there had been no identified disparity. We would like to designate digital mobile patrol cameras as the program purpose for which the JAG funds will be used, and because of the JAG deadline, we have already submitted the grant to meet the government deadline, and we would ask that you approve the JAG program grant application as was submitted. And, we've, I think you're all familiar with this. We've been doing this since 1998 under this particular grant, and I'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
Any questions for Chief Hill?
Chief, what's the cost of the four cameras?
It would be that much, ma'am.
Right at the amount of the grant?
And we would probably acquire them under the state contract.
Then, are those something that you all can install yourselves, or is installation another?
No, it would have to be installed.
Okay. How many patrol cars would have cameras after these four?
These would actually replace cameras that are wearing out, and the majority of our marked patrol cars all have cameras, but the ones that are used on patrol beats go 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and typically about a three-year life expectancy is all we're going to get out of them.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions right now? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Open that up for public comment at this time. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Vice Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the JAG program grant application as submitted for use of 2009 Edward Burn Memorial Justice Grant, and approve this grant application as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the JAG program grant application as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three to zero.
Item 8.3, resolution number 09-6632, amending resolution number 08-6557 relating to the establishment of a benefit district for street and sidewalk improvements in the Burkham subdivision.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. This, let's see, resolution started in September of last year. Scott Burkham signed a petition and requested some street water and sidewalk improvements for their, to serve their lots in the Burkham subdivision. After that resolution was passed, they decided to privately finance the water improvements. So, this resolution actually removes that from, the water system improvements from the resolution, and amends that resolution. The history here, also from, this area was first platted in 1992, and then replatted again in 2008, and kind of this is the sequence of events. They're now trying to build the infrastructure to serve the area. A hiccup with this actually was some notification to an adjacent property owner. Jerry Calabrese's property is right next to them. The Burkhams own eighty, over eighty percent of the area, but they do not own this unplatted piece of property. So, notification to Mr. Calabrese was, did not happen until later, and so, since that time, we've met with him to discuss his options. We have a resolution that says he should be notified, and so, we have since gone back and tried to figure out ways to make sure everybody's notified, and that's basically what that whole second paragraph says on the blue sheet, is how we're going to try and do that. Making sure that people either get a certified mail, or a personal call, or a hand-delivered letter. There's just a lot of different ways to try and make sure they're notified, and sometimes what works best, people still say they didn't get the letter, but we just try to, we're just going to try and make sure that they do. Either way, this has been pending since we awarded the bid to APAC in April, to try and work with Mr. Calabrese to see if his property would benefit from this. Basically, it has a financial impact to him, and if, he was trying to see if it would really benefit his property. And so, we've worked with our bond counsel, who is, Gina is here today, and tried to figure out if that's, if it's really going to benefit him, and they have since determined that this, this street benefits the subdivision, and serves the cities of Salina, and would possibly, could benefit his property. So, after bond counsel's concurrence with Attorney General's Office, how they examine the boundaries of the benefit districts to determine how they derive benefit, this one, this area that we have outlined in the map, is what we've come up with, and the benefited properties are all in here now. And, I guess the conformance with strategic plan, benefit districts are sometimes controversial when the people who don't want to, aren't in them, or they're in them, but they don't believe they're going to derive benefit from them, then they are going to discuss that here today. I believe there's some representatives here to talk on both sides of that today. But, city staff believes this project will increase the quality of life for the citizens by giving access to growing Salina business, and the opportunities for others to benefit. No matter who owns that property, they'd have the benefit possibility in the future for this street, and this will be a good street, and stormwater improvements to the area. With that, I would stand for questions, and we also have Gina here to talk about the actual benefit district process as well.
Questions, Mr. Stack.
Mr. Stack, it looks like Mr. Burkham's engineer prepared this petition, and on the last page, there's a, an estimate of distribution. Has staff reviewed that to determine if those numbers are accurate as to who would bear what amount of monetary responsibility for the improvements?
We have, and Mike Schrag has as well, with Jerry, I have, we all have actually, with Scott, with Burkham Industries as well, trying to figure out to make sure this is exactly right. So, based on the, it's a square footage tract size, and each, basically, the total area divided by total project costs, one thing, the unplatted tract will not have sidewalks assessed to it, which would be Calabrese's property. His will not have a sidewalk assessment, but everything else is split in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions? I'd like to open this up for public comment at this time. If you could please come up and give us your name and your address, please. I'm sorry, if you could please come up and give your name and address.
My name is Jerry Calabrese, and I own the property at, on Shilling Road. It's 360, if I recall right the address. What I want to do is, I'd like to back up a little bit farther. I'd like to start in the beginning of '08, when I was looking to buy this property. In January, I called Mr. Andrews and I visited him about costs, about the shilling assessment, which he told me about was $15,000, when I turned the property from ag to commercial, that I would have to start paying on the $15,000. And, I asked him some other questions, got off the phone when we, in February, before I made my initial offer, I called him back, went through everything again, and I asked him, I said, "Okay, are you sure there's nothing else that is going to cost me anything else that you know of?" And, he says, "No, not that I know of." And, so, I went on, and I made the offer for the property based on that, bought the property. Things went on in, I think it's April the 10th of this year, I went back into his office to go through the process of actually starting to develop the land. And, at that point, he told me about the approximately $25,000 assessment that I was going to get on the property. And, so, after communication on this, Mr. Schrage got involved, and everything backed off, so, we met again like we are right now. One of the things I asked Dean was, on April the 10th, was, "Did you know in February of '08 that the possibility of this project, street project was going to come up, and I was going to be assessed more?" And, at that point, he knew possibly it would be coming up, but, you know, there was no filing at that point, so, you know, by city guidelines, they weren't supposed to, I guess, bring this up. And, I visited with Mr. Schrage, I'm sorry, thank you, about that, it's tough, about that also, and, you know, he said the same thing. And, one thing he said was, you know, "If we bring that up prior to the filing, and that stops the sale of the property, the people who own the property are going to be upset." Well, that also, I mean, you need to look at that two different ways, because I was looking at more than one piece of property. So, by not getting all the information, the other guy was upset, because I didn't buy his property. And, I mean, dollar for dollar, things are so, you know, tight right now, you know, you need to know everything when you're coming in and talking to the city. And, by their guidelines, they can't, supposedly, they cannot say anything until the filing is issued. Because of that, you know, besides $15,000, now I have a possibility that I'm going to be spending another $23,100 for assessments. I mean, so, I'm up to, what is it, $38,100 is what I'm up to now for assessments on a piece of property I've owned for a little over a year. That's the part I'm not very happy about. You know, I understand Mr. Burkham needs the street. I don't want to stop the street, you know, it's viable for him. What I want to stop is the $23,100 that you're assessing me, because, you know, I've already got $15,000, and that's what I thought is all I had. Now, you know, I have nothing against Dean Andrews, Mike, either one of them, because, you know, they're going by the city guidelines. But, I think the city guidelines need to change, and everything needs to be stated, I feel. If there is a possibility that you're going to get hit with 5, 10, 15, 20, $30,000 here in the next year, and you already know it's a possibility, you need to know that before you buy the property, set for the amount of money that you're going to spend on it, putting the facility up. So, you know, I'm kind of caught in a hard spot here, and I have my suggestion, which I know won't fly, which is, the city pick up the $23,100, and then change their ways and bring everything out in the open from now on.
Okay. Any questions? Any further comment or questions?
I guess my question would be, is do you think your business or your land will benefit from the street?
No, I don't. And, another thing that concerns me is, is there another possible filing that's coming up here within the next six months on something else around there that I don't know about, that I'm going to be hit on it, that I can't find out about because it hadn't been filed? But, no, I don't think the street, I don't think I'll benefit from the street at all.
Why not?
I don't, I don't need it. It's no, it's not a necessity for me. I have shilling. That's all I need. I can get on and off from shilling.
Is there a driveway on shilling?
Right at the moment, there is, yes. Mike said that if we ended up going off of shilling, because I can split my lot up if I wanted to, and I was even asking Mike, I said, "You know, how about if I split my lot up, so I leave 10 feet on that side, will the assessments go away, and I'll leave my lot here, and I'll just come off the street?" He said, "Well, you can do that, but you still have the assessments, but, you know, we would move your access from, on shilling." They would want it straight across from, I don't know what the street is.
Ray Avenue.
Right, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What is, yeah.
If I might, I can provide a little bit of additional background. The city's actual formal policy, which is above and beyond the statutory requirements, is at the point that a resolution is passed, we do file a notice of pending assessments with the Recorder's Office, so, to try to prevent a scenario whereby a purchaser is unaware of the pending specials. The issue that Mr. Calabrese and I spoke about was, when that resolution hasn't been passed yet, we don't post anything that formal with the Recorder of Deeds Office. We don't necessarily have a policy that says we don't disclose, but it becomes a judgment issue in terms of, do we know whether something is pending, and is it far enough along that it should be disclosed, or does it become speculation that could hinder the sale? And so, the most clean step in that process is at the point that the resolution is passed by the City Commission, we then file the notice of pending specials. But, in this particular case, I think these plans, or the possibility of something was underway for years, but until that resolution, or that petition's filed, we didn't really know what the status of that project might be.
So, when the petition is filed, that's when all the property owners receive formal notice?
I believe it's actually at the point that we pass the, the City Commission passes the resolution of advisability, then we record it. And then, with respect to the benefit, your question of whether the property would benefit from the street improvement, that's where we consulted bond counsel in terms of strategic ways to zone it, and there are a couple of issues. From a planning perspective, staff would recommend that the, that shilling be maintained as a restricted access road, and that the access come off of Emulsion Drive, which may not be consistent with what Mr. Calabrese would prefer in terms of developing his property, but even so, we had to look at the potential of benefit regardless of whether the intended point of access is shilling or emulsion. My understanding from kind of the application of the statutory requirements, or the Attorney General's opinions in terms of benefit, is that this property would be subject to the special assessments. And, we spent quite a bit of time trying to piece through options, alternatives, making sure that we were assessing the benefits correctly in that district.
When was it platted? This division? Do we know that?
Yeah, it was originally platted in '92, and then replatted in 2008.
So, really, just a peek? I just want to make sure I understand it. We've got an aerial showing each one of the lots. Anytime after '92, we would have seen this picture.
It's a good question. I'm looking at the original replat, or the original plat. Looks like it was Lot 1, Block 1. Looks like it was Lot 1, Block 1 of the Burkamp subdivision. So it was only one lot. And then the replat in 2008, this looks like April of 2008, made those five lots that you see on this aerial. So it would have been, he talked around February, March of '08. Dean, from what I can tell, this was signed April of '08 approximately?
That would have been when that was done.
April of '08 was when this was actually finalized.
Commissioners, a couple of points to add on to what Mike was saying. One thing is, and I don't know necessarily about this project, but on any project where there's potential development, a lot of times there's the discussion about the development, whether it be rezoning or plating or whatever, but not necessarily special assessments. Special assessments are a financing option. The other question related to disclosure, if you could put yourself in the position of one of you owns a piece of property and it's for sale, and someone else is interested in it, and they come to the city and they ask us to disclose all conversations we've had with somebody about potentially developing that property, whether they're using specials or all that, and we disclose all that, not knowing really what they're going to do either this year for sure, three years from now, five years from now, or 10 years from now, because we do find a lot of projects go pretty far, then all of a sudden something happens and they don't hap, those projects don't occur. We've actually seen a few examples of that this year. But that disclosure of information then stops the sale of that property, then you're going to get the current property owner coming in to say, "What in the world were you telling this person? Those were items that you shouldn't be disclosing, those are private conversations, nothing was in stone, you didn't know I was going to do this, and now I've lost a sale of my property and may not be able to sell it from this point forward." So the problem is you put yourself, there's not a real good middle position on that. You're really on one side or the other. So that's one reason. We don't have a written policy, but in practice, we typically would not disclose that type of conversation until the petition's submitted, which finalizes that on the applicant's side.
I certainly understand that being the cleanest route, but I can certainly understand the being uncomfortable both ways there. It's problematic. Is there any other public comment at this point? Go ahead and bring it back to the commissioners.
Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-6632, which amends Resolution Number 08-6557.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 09-6632, amending Resolution Number 08-6557. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3 to 0.
Item 8.4, award a contract for architect and design services for the Bicentennial Center.
Mr. Perry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I hope you all are having a good day so far. This agenda item is before you, is of course to try to bring in, is to succeed in bringing in the architectural firm of Jones Gillum Rents for the architectural and design services to do the upgrades on the facility known as the Bicentennial Center. The facility is over 30 years old, is in need of a great deal of work, and what the overall plan to this is to put together a master plan with a list, be able to prioritize what the work is that we wish to do to the facility.
Any questions right now, Mr. Perry?
I've got quite a few things, if this is the appropriate time. One of the things that I guess I'd like to say is, I've got a lot of memories in the facility, whether that's Loverboy or Kansas Concert. We maybe will stop and not go any deeper in that. And, you know, I think about a lot of that and the intent of that facility, when it was built, I believe, was to draw large events into Salina and make it a regional venue. One thing that troubles me is that I think in trying times, in order to take less and less of a subsidy from the city, every year, the center ventures into smaller and smaller things. And we've discussed that openly. When we walk around and hear that we want to make a certain part much nicer to have more wedding receptions, I think about all of the private businesses that are in the wedding reception business. I know we have public and private competition in a lot of areas. So to kind of bring this home, I think what I haven't heard is a targeted business plan. And I would like to hear you kind of elaborate on that, the targeted business plan saying, "This is why we built it originally. This is really, large conventions or large events are focused, and here's how we're going to drive it home." So then, yes, we do need to compete less and less against others in the private sector in order to make it a viable enterprise. Or maybe that's not the plan, and then we definitely need to hear that that's not the plan, so that everybody knows.
All right, well, Commissioner Jennings, you're correct in stating that the Bicentennial Center's original mission and has been for all of its 30 years is to provide a regional hospitality center for events that will stimulate the Salina economy and to enhance the quality of life for the community in the region. City Manager Gage and I have had numerous discussions about trying to bring large concert events and things of that nature into the Bicentennial Center. We've been working on that since I've been here, which is not that long a period of time. We have got some more concert events and some things that are in the proposed stage for the facility, where I've had concert promoters who have contacted us about putting dates on hold. It will be where we are getting rent on these events, it's not where we are doing these events, where we're expending the money for an artist fee. That is some of the larger events that we're trying to do. As far as receptions and things of that nature, they are very ones that bring in a great deal of revenue for us and do continue to have the facility in a manner to where it is getting used and is getting noticed by the community. They are very good for us in the standpoint of our food and beverage division benefits from that, our operations division benefits from that. We have not, in the time period I've been there, actually developed a specific plan saying we're going to do this, this, or this, but we can develop that for you, sir, if you would like.
I think that'd be very helpful. We do know that there's lots of successful bookings out there, and that it's not necessarily on the surface just a volume-related issue, where we've got 40% more capacity, so we just need to kick more things in there. I think there needs to be an overall look at the rate structure, that, and then can that burden, you know, the payback of what we're looking at in targeted areas? And I'm, you know, I know we're not spending money to turn nuts and bolts at this point in time, so I don't know as to whether we would be talking about spending bad money here today, but I would definitely consider just spending, because we've got money coming available and not having a plan, something that I would probably get kicked around outside of this building for approving. So I want to make sure we got a good definition.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think I can add a little bit more background to the whole thing. The mission, really, the facility's never changed, as Marshall said, and it was considered America's meeting place from the very, very beginning. And I think at the time back when the facility was created, there was probably, well, from past conversations, there was pressure from us to be open to, whether it be civic groups or whatever event might be, and to basically open the facility up, not necessarily to target and go after a specific type of an event, but to be open to all of those. We're currently looking at our rate schedules, both the facility rental and the food rate schedules. We want to be, we don't want to be, we don't want to undercut and lowball for sure, and certainly we have to look at the financial condition of the facility. We certainly don't want to be the highest either, but we want to be in the middle somewhere. The purpose of the renovation, the actual renovation was discussed long prior, far prior to discussing the transient guest tax. And if, in the history, if you go back, it was actually in the capital improvement plan before the more current conversations on the transient guest tax as well. So we'd already been talking about a lot of that, and with the thought that when we look at the transient guest tax, that it would certainly help us to fund a good part of the debt service on this as we come along, but it was already in the, put in the CIP on the assumption that that might not be the case. Really, the purpose for that is, the building aesthetically, in some ways mechanically, electrically, is simply worn out and outdated. That's really what it is. So we're not really looking at changing spaces, you know, having different spaces that are different sizes or anything like that. But when you walk through the facility, it doesn't take long to look at the floor, the ceiling tiles, the walls. It's the 19, late 1970s, early 80s era. We were just having a funny conversation the other day when we said, "Well, when would we change this again? I don't want to come back 30 years from now and remember, you know, anything about myself because of what, because of the improvements inside." But, so really, the intention is to review all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, all those systems, review the aesthetics, the paint, the decor of the rooms and so forth, and simply update and fix whatever needs to be fixed, look at the HVAC systems, the bathrooms for ADA accessibility, because we still have some of that left, and then simply put a fresh look on the facility. That's really primarily it. So it's not, we're not really looking at targeting, besides what Marshall indicated, we would like to bring more larger events into the arena, and we hope to bring events that create the overnight stay, and then that benefit spills out to the hotels in the area. So that's something that we're sort of targeting more aggressively, but otherwise, the mission's pretty well been the same. Although I will say, they spent some time, and we've continually talked about, looking at the history of the events and looking at the margins for the events and trying to figure out those that are better financially for the facility and those that aren't, and from a financial perspective at least, and working further into that. So that's something that's sort of ongoing, but we really need to look deeper at. So hopefully that helps a little bit answer what the real need and desire for the improvements are.
Yeah, I, you know, just, just coyly, you know, it's not a profit center. So I want to, I want to at least have a decent feeling in my gut that by spending the kind of money we're spending into it, we're going to improve our odds of making it a profit center in its core business, which was what it was built for. And, you know, the kitchen is definitely an issue when you've got a 250-person wedding. No doubt about it, you guys perform miracles there. But the kitchen wasn't placed in in order to go out and do 250-person weddings. So if that becomes a focus and drives parts of it, I just want to make sure that we've got a good plan for it.
Well, and the kitchen is a good point, because the kitchen is, of course, one part of the feasibility and the look and the analysis of the facility. But quite honestly, we're taking another operational look at the kitchen as well, because there are many models of, if you're going to provide kitchen services, how do you do that? Do you provide it internally? The operations of the kitchen, do you look at, are there local providers that can do that and utilize that? We're really going to look at that. So before we come to you and want to engage on any physical improvements in the kitchen itself, we want to complete that review, and so we can come back and have a discussion about that and give you a chance to see where you would want to go with the kitchen. So any of the kitchen improvements that might be identified as a possible project certainly won't be locked in until we go through that discussion.
Mr. Gage, apart from the transient guest tax, how much per year does the city subsidize for operations?
Oh, I need to think here. We, apart from the transient guest tax, if I remember historically, the average has been somewhere, I'm going to look at our finance director a little bit, but I believe somewhere around 250,000 to 300, but in the last couple of years, well, last year and then going into this year, I believe that number's been up closer to about 350,000 to 400,000.
If I understood you correctly, Mr. Perry, I guess, I understand that in order to pull in bigger, better, more profitable shows or conventions, we need to update the look and not have a shabby convention hall for people to come in. But at the same time, I think it's imperative that you have a business plan in place that specifically sets out what you're targeting and what you're going to do to reduce that subsidy.
Yes, ma'am. Now, one of the things, and this has actually been very interesting, Commissioner Jennings was at a couple of different tours that we had at the facility that was conducted with the area hoteliers to help them understand what it is that this transient guest tax was going to be helping to pay for, so they could really see the facility. And we took them all through the place, let them see the bare bones of the building, and they kept looking around and they couldn't understand it, and they were just, "Well, this really needs to be done. Can't you do this right now?" Well, no, we can't do it quite this second. It's a little different when you work for government than you do for the private industry. But, you know, that's what we want to do, is try and get this feasibility study done so we can understand what our shopping list is that we need to get done, and we will certainly work on developing that so we have the model for which we will go after. I will tell you that it was really interesting to have the hoteliers there, because they were very supportive of it after they took the tour and saw the whole place.
I wouldn't have been old enough to go to it, but it might help if you looked into a Loverboy reunion tour for these two.
I'm not that much older than yours, I've told you that many times.
Quick question on that. In terms of actually looking at the architectural firms, if you could give us, a lot of times when we, when we look at bids, we have lowest bid processes, but that's not necessarily the case with professional services. Could you highlight some of the attractions to this particular firm that stood out for this particular project, I guess?
Yes, sir, actually, there was, we had a very good committee, I thought, comprised of six individuals who, we had them, we put out the RFQ that was based upon standard architectural documents to make sure that it was as standardized as possible, to put out to several different firms, local area firms. The committee that reviewed these documents were Deputy City Manager Mike Scragge, Gary Hobby with Development Services, Kent Johnson, who is civil engineer with the city, Andra Thurlow, who is our food and beverage manager at the Bicentennial Center, Jim Meyer, our operations manager at the Bicentennial Center, and myself. We reviewed all the documents. We then went through a standardized question procedure, where we went through interviews with three firms. We had sent them out to more than three firms, but only three firms made it, I guess, made the cut essentially or responded. And they came and we went through a standardized questions series with them. They were then graded upon that. It was done to try to make it totally fair and totally balanced against every person, so they all had the exact same questions and answers, or questions given to them, and their responses were then graded in the different areas that you see in the agenda, which was like the firm's history and resource capability to perform the required services, the evaluation of the assigned personnel to the project, the related experience that these firms would have had with this type of project, the firm's perception of project requirement and project approach, as well as the quality and completeness of qualification statement from these various firms. The recommendation from the committee was to go with a Jones Gillum Rents.
And I don't mean to, well, I guess, okay, so which, what of those things, which, or which one or ones of those things really seemed to stand out to the committee, I suppose?
One of the things that seemed to work best, I guess, seemed to really stand out with the, with the committee itself, was the related experience, as well as the firm's history and resource capability to be able to perform the required services. We wanted to really look at who was going to be able to answer our questions and be able to answer them for us and handle that for us on a local basis.
Okay, very good. Any other questions right now, Mr. Perry?
Commissioners, I want to make sure too, just for clarification, when you go to Attachment B and it shows the two phases that you'd be approving today, there's really two phases. There's the design for the remodel of the second floor, so we can get started on that, and then the actual feasibility study and master plan, which will outline all the potential projects for the rest of the facility. There's a decent chance that what's outlined in the feasibility may be far beyond what we have in the budget, but our objective is, is to get good information, good costs, and then be able to prioritize based on that. Anything beyond that would then come back as a different agreement in the phasing that would come back to you. So, but what will happen is it'll all play off of that feasibility study, master plan, and the prioritization. So we'll end up bringing that back to you when that's all complete.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rents, for being here today as well. Any public comment right now? Okay, see none? We'll bring this back to the commission.
Vice Mayor, I move that we award the contract for architectural design services for the Bicentennial Center to Jones Gillum Rents Architects.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract as submitted for architectural design services for the Bicentennial Center with Jones, Gillum, and Rents Architects. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3 to 0.
Item 8.5, first reading ordinance number 09-10,508, amending Chapter 2, Article 7, Section 2-162 of the Salina Code pertaining to membership, appointment, and term of the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission.
Okay. Mr. Gage?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is sort of a cleanup item. As you are aware, there has been action taken previously to really look at the formalized relationship between the Arts and Humanities Foundation and the Arts and Humanities Commission, the commission being an advisory committee of the city of Salina, the foundation being a nonprofit, basically fundraising organization that also does get involved in various activities in the community. And what this does is, that is basically in place, and... And what this does is, that is basically in place, and this would just realign the number of board members on the Arts and Humanities Commission Advisory Board side from 12 to 9, make sure we have an odd number, and it just matches up with the others. So we look at this really as just one of the final action housekeeping items. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Gage? Any public comment? Seen none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Vice Mayor, I make a motion that we approve on first reading, ordinance number 09-10-508, amending Chapter 2, Article 7, Section 2-162 of the Salina Code pertaining to membership, appointment, and term of the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance number 09-10-508. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Is there any other business?
Vice Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene in this room at 5:08 PM.
It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session.
Second?
Now it's been moved and seconded that we move into executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Do we expect any action to be taken?
We do not.
Thank you. We're in executive session.
I was doing it. I was doing it.